Good afternoon and welcome back. I am Deidre Martinez, the CEO of the Sheboygan County Chamber of Commerce. This is our number five of six candidate forums that we are offering to the community today. I want to say thank you again to our friends at WSCS for making it possible to share this outside of our conference room space here at the Chamber. Questions that folks would like answered. So with that, if we could ask you, John, to give a quick intro of yourself and we'll get started.
Okay, it will be quick. John Mauer, I'm a lifelong resident of the school district, most of that time in the city, some outside in the town of Lima. I've got three grown children, they're all doing well, a couple in Madison doing well, and a son and his family that live in Dundee. I just, this will just be, I'll be completing my 19th year on the board, so back in 2006. Ted figured things out and I solved problems. And that's something I can bring to the school board. That's something when our district has challenges and as we face them, I like to look at the options and really do some analysis and work, see what's going to really make the district a better place for our students. So that's what I'm looking to bring for the district.
Great, thank you so much. We'll begin with the first question about budget and funding.
District of balancing out our operational costs or our operational opportunities. Now, we do have opportunity to decrease, I believe, some of our costs for spending on teachers because our teacher compensation is 7% above the state average. And I don't believe, based off of, like, Sheboygan Falls is a good place to live, it's a good place to work, that in order to attract and we have to be careful that as we choose projects, we look at the costs and the opportunities of those projects and make sure we're really doing a proper analysis to say, are we doing this in the most cost-effective ways? And in general, a lot of things we are, but I think there are some opportunities that in the current referendum offering that we're missing.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mauer?
If I can recall everything that was in your question.
If you want me to repeat it, I'm happy to do that.
If I miss something, let me know. So I think Ted's point about our staff, if we're paying 7.2% above the state average, I think in order to retain and attract new staff, the very last thing we want to do is to tell them somehow we're going to reduce that pot. That's not exactly a motivating factor for anybody looking to come to Sheboygan Falls to have us tell them that, well, we're paying 7.2% above the state average, so we're going to cut that back. To me, that makes no sense. But, you know, our pay scale is what I would call a hybrid. We have a salary schedule that was put in place two years ago. That was put, that we are entering year three of that schedule for '25, '26. We need that, we need that level of consistency in order to budget. It's difficult to budget when Madison's doing a biennial budget every other year. So we, like, for instance, we don't know what our next budget's going to look like from the state. So having a structure gives us, gives us at least some budgetary stability so we can plan. The other part of that, though, is the reason I use the word hybrid is I think we have a hybrid unit if our district needs to go out and hire a tech ed teacher, for instance, which are in high demand. They don't plug him into that salary schedule, he or she. They negotiate a salary. If we need to pay premium to get someone, that's what we do. But we still need to have that stability in the budget. Referendum-wise, I think we've done a good job. Yes, we had two questions back in the fall, and that second question's been eliminated entirely because we surveyed the community and we knew there was no support. So I think what we did is we went from $78 million roughly, we've reduced that to $70 million, and I think that's where we're at, and I think it's a good plan.
Next, to talk a little bit about academic programs and curriculum, might be why we're all here, right? And we'll start with you, Mr. Mauer. Sheboygan Falls School District has a pretty decent rating on state report cards in comparison to some of our other districts in the county with strengths in career and technical education, including the Innovation Design Center, partnerships with local businesses. However, there are ongoing discussions about updating the human growth and development curriculum. What is your stance on the current, I can speak, curriculum and current are two words that you can't say over and over again, back-to-back, that on the current human growth and development curriculum and do you believe any changes are needed? Additionally, what other areas of curriculum would you prioritize for improvement or investment?
I'm gonna start on the broader first part of your question. I mean, we've been very proactive with curriculum. We've introduced a new math curriculum, first at our elementary school and then into our middle school, and ultimately that will progress into our high school. It's called Bridges. It has helped our younger children considerably with their math comprehension, and the results of test scores would bear that out. I understand human growth and development is a sometimes hot-button issue. Our curriculum, I think you used the word early on, modify, if you would, or if you could read that?
The, let me see which part.
Probably in the first sentence.
Yes. Ongoing discussions about updating the current curriculum, and then what is your stance on the curriculum? Do you believe any changes are needed? Or which curriculum would you prioritize if not that?
I think, yeah, I think currently, because we have not made any changes to human growth and development, so that review could come at any time, or since we're not making changes, it hasn't undergone a review for probably at least two or three years. So, but we're not making any modifications to that curriculum. The other thing I want to say about, for parents that are concerned about human growth and development, anytime any class in human growth and development is going to be taught at any level, parents have every right to withhold their child from that class. They're made aware of it ahead of time, they're given the opportunity to have their kids come and, you know, work on other academic, you know, assignments. In no way do we, you know, no one's got to be in a class if their mom or dad or guardian do not want them there. And I think that's important. I think people have to realize that they have the option to opt out if they want to.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
So I served with John on the years when we made the improvements to the curriculum in terms of the math and also teaching phonics and reading. Those were very good improvements, and those are helping our test scores from where they were. And Zach Pefton, who's in the room here, was instrumental. John and I were both on the board and selecting him as the superintendent. And I know for me, part of the reason was he had a strong basis in, he was our curriculum director at the time, and director of instruction, and he had brought that strong academic insight and looking at what's really going to help our students. And so I'm excited for that to continue. I also agree with John in terms of that the hiring flexibility that we have is important. We do a good job with being able to hire according to the skill level of a teacher. And we also do a good job if we have a teacher that wants to go out and work hard and earn extra degree to enable being able to teach a dual-credit class, which allows our students to get college credit while they're in high school, saving a ton of money, we'll also compensate the teacher in that regard, too. Where we need work is for just a regular teacher on a trajectory, and where there is different levels of merit on different teachers, we don't differentiate the pay on that. And I believe that's where we have the opportunity to still attract teachers, the best teachers, to our district while not having to pay more than the state average, or at least not the degree that we do currently. Regarding the topic of sex ed, there's a lot of our sex ed curriculum that I think is just fine. However, the, there are some parts that tap into resources that I think we shouldn't. And the biggest concern is that we, our curriculum reuses information from Planned Parenthood. And that information from Planned Parenthood has their liberal spin on things. And we should be neutral as a district. So we shouldn't be, you know, putting out material to the students that say, this applies to all genders, here's a reference where you can book provider information for abortion or gender-affirming care.
Thank you. And, you know, to kind of transition into school policies and student life, in the '23-'24 school year, Sheboygan Falls High School, I believe, implemented a stricter cell phone policy requiring students to keep phones in lockers during class to reduce distractions and improve focus. While some parents and teachers support the policy, students and some parents and teachers probably as well have also raised or voiced frustration. So we'll start with you, Mr. Bray. What is your position on the current cell phone policy? Would you support maintaining, modifying, or overturning it, and why?
I believe our administration does a good job of managing that balance. Cell phones, they're valuable to everybody who uses them, but they also can be a distraction and a problem, and it can be a problem for adults. And it's much more difficult when you're in those formative years and you don't have that executive function that kind of reaches the full level of maturity at 25. That's not where our students are. And so it's appropriate to set limits and say, hey, when you're in the classroom, focus on your teacher. The cell phones just can be too big of a distraction. And so being able to use them at times that's well-designated and set by the administration, say, okay, these are times we know it's not going to take away from the academics because academics has to be the focus of what we do, then that's appropriate. And the students are able to balance that. And I know that, you know, as a teenager, you might be like, you know, hey, I should be able to do this, I've got this all figured out, you know, but we also, as those of us who are a little past those teenage years, know that they can be a little optimistic in their capabilities, teenagers can. And so it's appropriate to be able to just put in the restrictions and set the rules that are actually going to cause our students to succeed. So I support the policy.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer?
I support the policy 100%. I think, looking back, cell phones could have been an asset in a classroom years ago. But once our students all have Chromebooks, it almost eliminates that need, and it becomes, I think, more of a strictly social media access, you know, texting or whatever with your buddies. I think parental concerns, I understand why people would have concerns, but if they really look at the policy and look at the ability to get in touch with their student in an emergency through the office, through the website, it's all right there. It's not, it's not that your child is going to be completely off-limits to you for seven hours. So I think parents need to just maybe ask a question or two of the school and of the people in the offices, the principals, and they'll get an answer that will make them feel at ease. I don't think there's, I don't think there's that fear, maybe a little bit, not unfounded, but just kind of based on just fear, if they would have an answer. So I think, and I think, you know, kids will be kids, and they'll want to do it, and they'll, but Falls is not cutting edge in this. Many school districts around the state have done this very same thing, and I think, I think it does, you know, I agree with that. It lets them focus academically on what's at hand and without any other distractions.
Sure. I have six children, so believe me, I liked, and yes, when you take their cell phone away, boy, they might lose their mind, but they'll figure it out and come back to reality. Sorry for any of the kids that are watching, but I agree. Let's talk a little bit about workforce readiness and business partnerships. So Sheboygan Falls has strong partnerships with local businesses, Bemis Manufacturing being one of them, to provide students with real-world skills in manufacturing, engineering, and technology through the Innovation Design Center. How would you expand or strengthen these partnerships to ensure students are prepared for the workforce? And what specific programs or initiatives would you support to connect education and local industry needs more effectively? Mr. Bray, we'll start with you.
We currently have partnerships with, from a dual-credit perspective, like, working with the local universities on the, for our college-bound kids. And so this question's talking about what do we do better to help with the trades? And so those, because a number of students, like, they're more hands-on, like, they, you know, don't want to go to four years of college and incur that and take that professional route, although that is a great route for the right student. But they're like, hey, I want to be a welder, I want to be a mechanic, or something like that. And so we do a good job already, and we have a strong history because of the manufacturing in this area. Like, we have a legacy in Sheboygan Falls of providing good education to students in this area. And so the opportunities to work with other businesses, it is something I haven't actually dug into a lot myself, but I am absolutely open to, and I believe it's appropriate to talk to Bemis and talk to Jawa and say, like, these are your future hires, and a lot of them. And so how best should they work with you in order to facilitate, you know, learning as much as they can? And so I'm, the partnerships, whether it's, you know, possibly off-site and onto the jobs for, like, you know, not more than what we can just do in our current labs, or if there's some parts of their manufacturing that actually make it into the high school, I think those are great conversations that we should have.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, any additional beyond the manufacturing, the engineering space, any additional hands-on programs you think that would be a benefit to introduce or encourage in the Sheboygan Falls School District for students?
I guess similar partnerships in other industries that we have around here, and the one that comes to mind most is hospitality. You know, we have a number of restaurants and large hospitality businesses, we are a draw relative to Wisconsin as a whole. And so there, too, is a number of students can, you know, we have a strong culinary offering that translates into jobs and employees that the local restaurants and resorts in the area need. And so there, too, I would look for the partnerships, say, how can these students learn from what makes things work well in real life? And that's part of some of the assets of the current referendum. So the, like, because one of the things we're looking is improving the culinary space and putting in a commercial-grade kitchen instead of just a residential-grade kitchen so the students can learn those commercial-grade skills and be more hirable. And so increasing partnerships in that area is just an example of how we can better prepare our students.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer, would you like me to repeat?
No, no, thank you, thank you. I think our relationship with local industries and trades is strong, but it can be even stronger. And I think one of the keys, I'm going to work backwards, I guess, a little bit, one of the keys to that is part of the referendum plan is a brand-new addition for our CTE programming. Right now, we can, because of space limitations, we can fit about 15 or 16 kids into a metals class, or our ag room is small, Ed mentioned culinary. By looking at that new space, we can increase that by 50%. We get 24 to 25 kids in a class. Kids don't get, some kids, especially freshmen and sophomores, don't get into those classes because of space restrictions. So I think one of the keys is that addition, which would really enable us to expand that programming and offer it to many more students, which, they're some of our most popular classes. They are, you know, things go in cycles. You know, when my kids were young, you got to go to college, you got to get that four-year degree. That has changed so much now, and we've pivoted. I mean, we have good, we have good programming, but we need space because they're so popular. So I think that's one of the keys. I'm trying to remember back to the first part of the question, if you don't mind.
Just, how would you expand or strengthen the partnerships? And if you think that there should be any additional programs or things that could feed local industry needs more effectively?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things, the conversations that we have, or I shouldn't say we, I should say our administrative team has with local industries, a lot of it is predicated on, let's, let's see what you do. People always ask me about certain entities in Sheboygan County, and they see signs, fieldhouses, whatever it might be. And the reality is, that money may be available only after you pass a referendum and you're building. And that's not the incentive to do a referendum. The incentive is to give our kids the best chance at success. But, but I think people are, need to realize, some of that stuff happens in bulk after, after there's a building in place.
Thank you. So to talk a little bit about school safety and student mental health, as these continue to be top priorities for families and certainly since the pandemic, I think that need has, I don't think, I mean, we hear about it often, and the need has certainly grown. Sheboygan Falls participates in the PATH program, providing access to healing, providing onsite counseling and support for students. Facility upgrades proposed in the referendum also included secure entrances and other safety measures. What additional steps would you advocate for to enhance school safety and mental health resources for students? If we can start with you, Mr. Mauer?
I think certainly safety for students and staff is part of, is part of the referendum plan. There are points in our building where you can enter, let's say, through the pool to go up into our weight room. You then literally have access to the entire building. And that can be before school hours, it can be after school hours. That's a safety concern. The new plan, the referendum plan, would allow for secure access to a new fitness center without getting access to the rest of the building. So that's, that's obviously a concern for us. So I think, I think, those are, again, part of the referendum, and I'm sorry, if you could, I lose, I get an old, I lose track.
Hey, I'm getting old, too, okay? So, I just have my notes here, that's the only reason I can keep myself on track. But what additional steps would you advocate for to enhance school safety and mental health resources for students?
Mental health is, I'm sorry, I should have, mental health was, it's incredibly important right now. We had a meeting with, a couple Fridays ago, with Assemblyperson Brill, and our high school principal was in that meeting. And I think we started about 1:00. His morning was taken up with six students at the high school with mental health issues, with literal breakdowns. And he mentioned to Ms. Brill, he's not equipped to handle that as a principal, that's, it's not a strength of his. We have counselors, but when you have that kind of mental health, those kinds of mental health issues, and that's a, I won't say that's a regular day, but it's just a microcosm of what happens now in all of our buildings. I can be in our elementary school, and you know that they're having issues with young children when they need to just put them in a wagon and walk them around the hallways just to settle them down. So it's something that has to be addressed, and there's multiple ways to address it, but it has, it can't take a back burner anymore.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Bray?
So I agree that the mental health helping our students is something that the school district absolutely has to be a part of. You can't educate a student, that's our primary focus, but you can't educate a student who's, like, as John was saying, in a wagon, like, who's really struggling. Like, those struggles with mental health get in the way of everything that we need to do in terms of developing. And so working with the partners we can, you know, we have, our counselors, which is good that we do, and, but bringing in the professional help that students need continues to be important. I think it also highlights, like, some subtleties we should really think about long-term. One of the downsides we have to our high school is, it was built in 1969, is that era of school building, and, I mean, it's built like Fort Knox. I mean, it's a really strong, solid building, it's going to last a long time. There's a reason that we're looking at, the district is, they're putting a lot of money into improving it because it's, it's got a lot of legs in it. At the same time, that era, like, there's very little natural light, the environment of the way buildings were built back then really is not conducive to optimizing mental health. There's, a number of studies have been done since that building was built, saying, hey, with natural light, your environmental factors make a pretty sizable difference. And, in fact, more probably from what I, you know, can tell the research I've done, than even like the access door areas, like, some of the things that we're spending a lot of money on are good potentially, but realistically, there's never been fatality from something that, like, secure access would have fixed. So it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, but if you have to look at the price tag, you have to look at a cost-benefit and say, how many millions are we spending? What else could we be spending with those same number of millions? And can we actually get a bigger bang for the buck by taking a different direction in terms of providing a foundation and environment where students will just thrive a little bit more and kind of alleviate some of these mental health problems potentially before they begin?
Thank you so much. And we'll start with you, Mr. Bray. You know, in looking at, you know, as someone who serves in that capacity, who has students in Falls, who's raised your children there, or child, I can't recall if it was children or child, but I know there was at least one.
Yes, children.
Children, thank you. What are, you know, what if, specifically, are areas that you believe are the most important that need to be addressed in the Sheboygan Falls School District effective immediately? And what would, what would be your action to take if re-elected or elected into this role?
The most important focus of the school district, it's kind of boring because it's like educating our students well, it's academics. It's just making sure we stay focused on teaching, reading, writing, math, science, the other disciplines, social studies. That, like, it doesn't make for super-great headlines, but really keeping that academic focus has to be job one. And if you do that, like, that's what will set up students to have good character, they will develop the wisdom they need, and they will develop the skills they need to enter the workforce and raise families and do the things they need to do. So I, like, that's the focus, but in terms of, like, what are problems that we need to, like, address that get in the way of that? Like, we talked about the mental health. I would say vaping continues to be a problem, like, you know, just keeping students from getting caught up in the things that, you know, going back a couple decades, like, you didn't have THC pens that made it really convenient for students to get high dosage of material that, especially at their age, can be really damaging. And it's also a really difficult problem to solve because it's, it's easy for kids to sneak around. And so it's not like I can come to the table saying they have a whole bunch of solutions to this, and it's not like the administration, the other board members for that matter, aren't aware that there's a problem. But it's an ongoing need that we also don't want to lose sight of. It's something that interferes with some students being successful, and we really want to make sure we, our students are not, nothing's keeping them from being able to focus in on the academics and really just thrive for the reasons that they're at the school to begin with.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer?
I would agree with Ed, student success has got to be number one. And I think almost everything we do pushes towards that, whatever, whatever the curriculum developments might be, facilities improvements might be, there's, that's got to be number one. I think, secondly, and we've talked to our superintendent, Mr. Pefton, a couple years ago, there was goal-setting, and one of them was, attract and retain the best teachers possible. And, and so that, that was also a priority. But that's very difficult. Even though we're getting more teacher, teachers into the system in Wisconsin than are retiring, 55%, only 55% of the teachers are still in teaching after seven years. And special ed is even worse. Special ed is 44% are only left after seven years. So that's, that's a major issue. We've talked to, we've talked to our assembly people, and they've asked us, what do you need? And we kind of target special education because regardless of the district, whatever population they have for special education, they're only being reimbursed about 32% of the cost of taking care of that student. The rest comes out of our general fund. We spend more than $2 million a year transferring from our general fund to our special education fund. Funding is huge. It's a mandatory requirement that we educate special-needs kids, and we do a great job of it, but it's a challenge when you're, when you're 68% in the hole to start with. So I think that's another, obviously, another important factor for us is funding. And I think, lastly, is the referendum. Because to do the top one, to continue to educate our kids and make them successful, we have to, really, honestly, we got to get our, some of our buildings into the 21st century.
Thank you. And as we are approaching time, we'll give each of you a couple of minutes for any closing remarks, things you would like voters to know as they head out to the polls here in a couple of weeks about you and why you would like to be elected. We'll start with you, Mr. Mauer.
Obviously, if I didn't want to be re-elected, I probably would have not put my name on the ballot. However, I think more importantly than that is I want people to do the research on the referendum. I mean, that, in some ways, that means more to me than being a candidate, and I know that may sound self-serving and whatever, but it's more important in the long run for Falls School District. Just take a good look at it, go to the site, see what's on the, see what's on, in the referendum, look at the, look at the cost. We went from almost $2 per 1,000 valuation in the fall to 25 cents, max. And I think, by doing that, making some changes, making, downsizing it a little bit, I think we've, we should, I think we can make the case to our community that it's, now's the time to do it. And I hope they'll go and take an honest look at it, and if they're, if they're questioning what it's going to cost them, they can easily just jump on the tax calculator and it'll tell them, the impact on their mill rate and their fair market value. So I think that's, that is, that would be my parting comment, is just for our community to take a, just an honest look at it, and, and then make their decision based on that. I'm not going to say that they should vote yes, I just think, I would just want them to be, you know, well-informed and then make a good decision.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
So I would state that academic, focusing on academics has to continue to be what we, that's got to be job one. And so part of that is, I agree with John, that we need to have solid facilities in order to do that. Now, at the same time, we also have to bring that focus to really making sure as we invest in the facility- in the facilities, that's really where we're, we're putting it into facilities that will act, educate the students. And we've talked to some aspects of it. One aspect we haven't discussed in this forum so far is the, what we do as far as helping families who have really young children. We offer a half-day 4K right now. One of the projects on the referendum, $6 million, is to expand the elementary school. And that basically frees up space, that will create space in order to provide care for children, not as part of the 4K program, but additionally to that, additionally to that, which is a benefit to families that, you know, that would like to work and like to have the kids taken care of every day. But at the same time, it comes at a large cost to taxpayers. And so it brings up this question, should the, that be a taxpayer-funded expense or should it be something that the free market takes care of? I personally am more of a favor of normally let the free market run. There is some arguments, we said, hey, we need more kids, we want to promote families. But I think that's better handled at like the national level with like child tax credits because that way you're being fair to parents that may choose daycare or parents that decide to raise their kids at home. And so I think we should be in the business of education. We shouldn't be in the business of childcare. And so that's where we should, I think we do a better job of drawing a line. If we want to have a partnership, if there's a childcare facility, says, or a provider that says, hey, we would love to rent some space, set up a long-term contract, you know, we'll pay you enough to fund the cost of building this, well, absolutely. You know, because if there's, you know, there is logistical advantage to having it on-site. But that should be a partnership. It shouldn't just be something that is a tax on all the other families that need to make ends meet. The, one of the things I would really like to see differently done to was the school district being, doing a better job with transparency with the, with the referendum in terms of the cost aspect. There's a lot of good information about the work that's going to be done and there's a lot of good work that we need to do. We want to have good quality schools. But at the same time, the, if you take the $70 million and you divide it out by the 5,000 some households in the district, that comes out to about $13,000 per household. That's ultimately what it costs. I mean, it'll either be your property tax or if you're renting, your landlord will set your rate according to his property tax. Or if, you know, some of the money's being paid by businesses, but they need to get the money from somewhere, it ultimately comes back to households. There's, there's no free ability there. And so the, what's on the district website is the incremental, there's already a certain amount of tax that's built into paying for referendums, paying for the middle school from seven years ago. And so it's like saying, well, okay, because that middle school referendum is on track to go away within a few years. Because the district has set the tax rate high enough to pay it faster than the 20-year loan that was private. It's actually gonna be, it could be gone within five years at the current rates. And so really, it's a choice to the community, like, okay, you could get, you could take that off your tax bill, there's a special line item, it could disappear. Or, you know, or we can keep it on for a long number of years to pay for all these improvements. And there's, there's good reasons that we actually should keep a lot of it on there, but it should be a really healthy conversation we should have. We should be very upfront, saying, here's how much it's gonna cost. And not just like, here's how much more than what you're used to, like, this is the total amount you're actually paying. And now is it worth it? Because then that prompts the question, are there opportunities where there's things that aren't really as academically focused that we shouldn't have in there in order to balance those costs better? So I would encourage anybody who wants to know more, there is a community group that started up called Falls Forward. There's a website, fallsforward.org, and that has information about the referendum and other topics that I think are very interesting for the school district to consider.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you all for joining us today. Thank you to our candidates for participating in the conversation and for your willingness to serve in this capacity. I know it's, cannot be easy, so thank you so much. We are gonna take a short break and then we will be coming back with our final candidate forum of today, which will be the Sheboygan Area School District School Board. And so we're gonna just reset the room a little bit and then we'll be back. Thank you so much.